So we will open up the February 11, 2019, meeting of the Board of Selectmen. I want to skip to, anybody recording the meeting other than Lakeville? I want to skip to Agenda Item Number Three. This is a request to designate a position of part-time council on aging clerk position as a special municipal employee. So the motion is to designate a part-time council on aging position as a special municipal employee pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 268A, Section 20.
I'll second that.
Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Agenda Item Number Four is to discuss our request from the Lakeville Arts Council to use the Dickren-Girren Square Center Stage in the Townhouse on October 5, 2019 for the 2019 Arts and Music Festival. I move that we do that.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Number Five. We have a request from Spark Run Sports to hold a mixtape cycling event on April 14, 2019. The ride will start at Ted Williams Camp and go through Lakeville. The event has been approved by the Fire Chief and Police Chief. I move that we allow the event.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number Six. A request from the South Shore Race Management to hold the Fifth Annual Lakeville Police Hot Pursuit 5K Road Race on September 21, 2019. Fire Chief and Police Chief have approved the race. I move that we approve it.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Do we have any new business? Do we have any old business? We certainly do. Let's talk about it. So, our Town Hall redesign, the file cabinets are on order for the Assessor's Office. I was in there, the floor looks great. Everything's taped off where stuff's going. When do you expect that stuff to be in?
The lead times may be three to four weeks.
Okay.
And in the meantime...
When was it ordered?
Hi?
When was it ordered?
Last week.
Okay.
Well, initially what they had set up wasn't going to work. It didn't leave any room. So we had W.B. Mason come back out and went over it with John Oliveri and...
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good. All right, we have a community compact HR grant that's being drafted. We're currently drafting a hiring policy. That's moving along, right?
It's stalled out a couple of weeks only because Corinda and I have been a little busy, but that's the last major thing to be done.
Okay. Update on the new police station. We have a budget report on there. There were some change orders that we had approved. We have a station walkthrough for the selectmen and the building committee scheduled for the 15th. Did anybody have any questions about anything that was on that?
I do. So what, I guess it's really just the remainder of the general construction that's the large. I mean, this is still on target for April?
Yes.
For completion? I mean, do we anticipate any additional, you know, large change orders that are going to be coming through or are we...
No.
So that's, we had talked about briefly about if we were going to see when we should bond for this and check the rates on it because...
Yep.
If we look at this and you take out the remainder of the project contingency, you know, I mean, even if you just took off a million dollars from it, you know, just to try to talk about what we wanted to do but bond and how this should get funded. I don't know if we want to have that conversation now or wait, you know, another month and then have the conversation. I think we had originally said let's wait till closer to March, but...
No, no, kick it around.
I don't, I don't really have anything to say other than, you know, unless we, I don't want to bond at a amount that we're not, you know, comfortable with, obviously, but if it's time to start getting pricing at least on the bonding...
Sure, can you look into that for us for our next meeting?
The town clerk, I mean, the treasurer, do the next $2 million bond, which will make $6 million.
Okay.
Because for cash flow, we will need to do that, but I'll call Lynn Foster and have her...
Yeah, because then we just convert...
Set up a timeline.
All of that, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Just so that we're ready to go with it.
Right, right. The only big, the only big item that I thought was a little bit up in the air is this communication stuff because on a capital plan, unrelated to the police, is a gigantic one under fire. And I think the fire and the police kind of get combined. I want to make sure that the one under fire doesn't stay there, that the police one...
That 292.
Supersedes it.
Yep.
So, and we certainly, right, we can have all that because as we move along, it's really just the communication that is a little bit up in the air, how much that all costs.
And I'd like to know too, because this doesn't, this budget where it says what's been dispersed, which says 4.24 down the bottom as of February 6th, does that though include transfers in the water stabilization fund for the water line? Because I just want to see what we've actually dispersed from our funds related to the police stations so that we know what we actually want to bond.
It's the very last item, the $124,012.
Well, so that's a, so that needs to be a reduction from the 4241 right now. So if we were to look right now to say what have we actually spent on this, it'd be the 4241 minus the 124120.
Well, they subtracted it from the balance.
Right, because that's not, it's included in the dispersed, but it's coming from two fund sources.
Right.
But they subtracted it from...
Just what's due, balanced to complete.
Right.
So I just want to know if there, we didn't pay for anything else out of any other funding sources, right? Or are we not planning on it? Just so that we know, do you know what I mean? Like if it's 4.2 but we've actually, 120 came from the Water Enterprise Fund, we've only actually spent 4.1.
We passed the hat at the last meeting to raise funds to save the old dangerous weapons box.
Still not in the hallway.
We're going to move that over there.
So you want me to ask Taylor?
Joking, of course.
Yeah, just, just so that we know what, I mean, I don't think it's really Taylor, it's really Todd, because if we ask Todd where did the funds get dispersed from, I just want to make sure that we don't miss that so that when we go out to bond, we're not bonding something that came out of a stabilization fund.
Right. Yeah, you can coordinate that with Rita offline. I mean, that's a great point, but that's something that we should have a clear answer for when we're making the decision on how we're going to proceed with bonding.
How much, right.
Because obviously we don't want to borrow money that we already have.
Right. Did you want to use that money out of the water stabilization for the water, which we did, all right?
Yeah, yeah. I think we have 176 or something in there.
That's the only one that we're addressing, I think.
Still left.
Still left in it?
Yeah, there was still money left in it, which I don't know that you want to use it for that.
Yeah, right. Okay. That's all I have on that.
Okay. Any other questions about that? All right, so then we have an update on Route 79.
Wow.
Meeting with DOT.
That was quite the meeting. There was, there was an army of folks there. Must have been 15 or more people in this, in this room. And it was rarely called based on a previous meeting of a couple of weeks before that, that Rita Lorraine and Bader and just a couple of people from the state. Franklin and a couple of people from the state. And so where we are is the movement of the telephone poles and the land that they're talking about taking, both seem to have grown. Telephone poles, I remember being 40 kind of originally, now they're talking 100. It was like 4,000 square feet of land takings. It seems to be 9,000 square feet now. And then you certainly have permanent temporary easements and you have land takings. So all of those seem to have grown substantially. I call it substantially. And so there's going to be a walkthrough from Galphie Road to by the dump by Clear Pond where we look at where the sidewalks are, where the telephone poles are being moved, that type of thing. And that will be about the end of March. And I would suggest, when is it Rita?
I got the date this week, April 24th.
It's like the most dangerous walk through that you could imagine.
April 24th. At 10:00 AM.
Huh? Right, April 24th.
That's what I mean, it's not really a walkthrough.
Well, really, we asked them, we asked them...
We ride our bikes.
We asked them and technically they said walk. Now, Lorraine had come up with a good idea, the Gatter Van, but I want to make sure that we probably...
It'll cost us a buck.
We probably, I don't know that we can use it, but anyways, if we can't, we should, we should rent something.
I think she said it's available.
Because, well, it's available, but can you use it for non, non-funcions?
Yeah, I'm not doing it.
That's not safe.
No, 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 you can have a police detail in. The van?
The whole thing. No, no, the...
Oh, no, no, you're going to have a police detail. No, no, you're going to have a police detail.
All right.
And so, so I think it's important that we walk through that because let me give you some staggering numbers.
Well, are we now going back and forth again across the street? Did that happen?
Well, well, let's say, let's say I'm not entirely clear and I think the walkthrough is going to be what they're finally proposing.
Okay.
And yes, it flips from one side to the other, but exactly where and does it make sense to anyone?
Right.
That is, we weren't going to rip up the road from Precinct Street, say it on 79, from Precinct Street at the bend to Galphie. That road's perfectly good shape. Well, they're saying that because they're adding a sidewalk, obviously to nowhere, that that creates all the drainage issues and now, now they want to dig up a perfectly good road because they're saying it's cheaper to do it that way. Well, so I think we all should partake in that, but let me give you some numbers that are pretty frightening.
The school's gone.
They're talking about the assessor being a $300,000 number, which I couldn't get my head around that. They're saying that the damages that you pay out, they use Needham as an example, Needham Newton as an example.
Natick.
Of being one and a half million to $2 million that we pay for.
Right.
In addition to that, you pay Bader more money also.
Sure, of course you do.
So that was somewhat a subject of debate. He had not given us a bill because I had said I didn't want it to be escalated like Castle Boys.
I was going to jokingly say that. Is the school already canceling school and they're already canceling school?
Yeah. 11 o'clock for the high school.
It's not even supposed to snow until like 3.
11:30 in middle school and 12:15 to the elementary schools.
But south of the Turnpike, not much.
No after-school programs, no breakfast, no lunch.
Right, right.
Oh, boy.
So, so the numbers...
Sorry, John.
Have grown tremendously.
Had to take that call.
So you're talking a number out of pocket.
Remember when we anticipated this when we met with them and we said, what's the cost?
What's the cost? We wanted the cost done, they're still saying, oh, no, 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 you still can't do this, however we've done this in other towns and here's the number. And it's a mind-boggling number that out of pocket could be as much as $3 million. So, one, we don't have that money.
It's just getting worse.
So I think the point is, is let's do the walkthrough at the end of April.
You don't know when it's scheduled yet?
April 24th, I think, is what.
April 24th?
Did you, did you say April 24th Rita?
At 10:00 AM.
April 24th.
We're going to meet at the library, the Lakeville library.
Meet at the library.
Hey Leah, Mark.
It will have some kind of transportation, police detail, the whole bit.
All right.
So...
So it's a frightening number.
Should I write my obituary for that day?
No, 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 no.
No, we're driving.
No, 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 not with police details. No, no. Oh, if you did it without police details, good luck.
Well, I do want to know, what I'd like to know beforehand is the original design, which did go, I'd like to know because it changed a couple of times of which side of the road any of the takings would be on. And then they flipped from one side to the other. I'd like to know if anything of that was related to a change in the design for the double sidewalks or getting rid of the double sidewalks, whatever the case was, if we still have an option on the table, that would be the 40 poles as opposed to the 100 and why that changed. So I don't know if there's ever another...
Yeah, we totally should push back on this. Totally should push back.
Well, right, I think, I think, I think the logic or the illogical part of it is when you do the walkabout, you can say, wow, what the hell are we doing that for?
Right.
Exactly.
I think you could buy every house on the way...
Right.
For some of the money they're talking about.
$3 million.
So I just don't, I don't see it, but what happens is you obviously ask for donations and stuff and say, listen, if you folks want this, you know, we're not going to pay you hundreds of thousands of dollars. If you want to pay it, we're not going to do it.
Well, that's the problem though, it becomes a big political problem because you have people that don't want to, that have a small front yard, you know, lose more of it.
Right.
And then you're asking them to donate money, or not donate money, donate the land. They're going to say, what are you crazy? You have to give us fair market value. It's just, it's going to be, it's just, this is, this has been going on for six years?
For years.
Seven years?
Well, I think longer. Go way back.
This is a complete nightmare.
Crispap.
A complete nightmare.
Yeah, go way back.
One of the, but when you look, they sent us the printout of the easements, like on one of the properties between Precinct Street and where that other street comes out in East Taunton, like one property, it's a landscape easement, a temporary utility easement, and some of them have three easements on one piece of property.
And then some are permanent, permanent aerial easements.
Yes, yeah.
But I think the walkthrough, the walkthrough, you can save it for that, who are you going to pay to do all this comparison?
Right, well who's...
I'm not paying Bader all the time.
No, so who, who actually, is it DOT or is it Bader that's now saying that everything's changed?
They haven't even, they haven't even placed the poles and things like that.
Right.
I don't think they've done what, what you're suggesting.
Well, who's saying now it's 40 to 100?
Right.
Like who's...
Well, they mentioned, they mentioned that at the meeting.
But who? DOT?
The state.
Yes.
The state mentioned it.
Jerry Dougherty from the state who has done other ones.
Yeah, the state mentioned.
Who was on the phone with us the first couple of times we had meetings, right?
This is the, what's his title?
He's the land taking expert.
Who hasn't been in any of the meetings.
So he threw, he threw the scare of everyone at you when he started talking north of $2 million.
So can we, can we write a, like in the interim, can we just pen down those concerns and send it right to Secretary Pollock? Because, and we'll go through Rick Cologne too because he has...
This is exactly why we met with them.
Exactly, and that's what's happening.
It might be premature. We might do the walkthrough and say, we're not doing any of this.
Yeah.
You've got to do the walkthrough, really. Really, I think you do.
All right, I agree, that's the update.
But it's a frightening number, so you may never do it.
And I'm just...
All right, we're moving on, folks. We're going to number one. This is 6:45. We'll get back to it. We got our chief here, we don't want to keep him waiting. Just to meet with our Fire Chief regarding a request to appoint Ryan Barrett as a full-time firefighter EMT.
Ryan's been employed as a qualified fighter since 2013. He's about to become a paramedic in a few months. He's been a very active member of the department, solid kid, a Lakeville boy, and likely to stick to the department, and I would like to hire him.
Okay, well, a move that we approve, that's not the right one. Oh, here it is. Sorry. Continuing upon the following, a medical examination, successful completion of the physical abilities test, full-time firefighters recruit academy in one-year probationary period, and licensure as a paramedic within one year of appointment.
I'll second that with discussion.
Okay.
The paramedic, where does he stand on that? Has he done the schoolwork and he's waiting for test results or he hasn't tested? Where does he stand?
He has completed all the schooling, he's completed the testing, he has 500 hours of clinical and ride-along time to complete, and that's actually where he's at right now. He couldn't attend because he's at clinical. So basically, he has to spend the time at the hospital and he can complete his ride-along time while he's working, while he has patient contacts that he, that'll incur as he's performing as a Lakeville firefighter.
So everything's been past satisfactory, less than 500 hours that he'd get without going outside of the department?
Correct. Yeah, so it's pretty much a slam dunk that he'll be able to complete his requirement on paramedic.
Okay. That was my only question.
All right. Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. All right, motion carries.
Thank you.
So the second order of business we have with our Fire Chief is to discuss ambulance billing rates. So we typically vote to set the rates. We haven't done it in quite some time. Mike has provided us with some information that shows that perhaps our rates are maybe a little lower than they should be. Oh, it's the school.
Usually it's alphabetical. It must be going backwards.
The caller has a call from the Free Town Lakeville Regional School District. Good evening.
Good evening.
This is the superintendent of schools of the Free Town Lakeville Regional School District, Richard Maturis. Because of the expected winter conditions tomorrow afternoon and evening, there will be an early dismissal for all students.
They're so desperate for a snow day. You've got to love it though, right?
The fire department's going to be dismissing early as well.
Yes, they should. What's Town Hall getting now? I should be the judge.
Michael will address the rates, but hadn't we done this? You're saying we haven't done it since 2015? I thought they had come before us, certainly between now, now and then. And we've always increased it to the maximum rate. And you're saying that didn't happen for four years?
No, I think when Danny came in front of us, if I was not mistaken, that you have the average ComStar rates that we kept going to so that we get this thing every single year. And it was really ComStar saying, change it to this, but it wasn't looking outside of what's in here? Is that correct?
I guess the selectmen voted in 2018, but according to ComStar, the rates didn't get changed, but they did vote.
Well, that's a ComStar problem. We've done this before.
You did in 2018.
Yes. So to say we hadn't done it since 2000, because they didn't pay attention or we didn't communicate it to them, shame on us, but the Fire Department came to us before and we changed them. We always change to the maximum.
But ComStar didn't change them since 2015.
Yeah, I can't speak to why that's happened, but I can promise you I'll follow up.
I don't know why that happened, but, but, go ahead.
Yeah, so your, your point here is that you've, you've gotten some information, or you can tell, tell us what you got here.
In my mind, I always, it's a revenue source, I'm trying to lessen the burden of the Fire Department on the, on the town. That's so, and it's always been my mindset to be efficient, maximize revenue, and, and this is kind of, to me, it's maybe money left on the table that we could be maybe lessening the burden of the Fire Department. So it's just an opportunity. I'm not, you know, passionate about it, it's just, it's just throwing it out there for consideration.
But they, they'll pay a certain amount anyway, insurance carriers will pay a certain amount anyway.
Exactly.
Right. So we've had this conversation before. I totally remember going through all of this stuff, which is fine. I mean, I'm happy to raise them to what you're recommending if you believe that that's adequate based on the market.
Their, their process usually is to throw a number out there and to capture the high-end insurance providers and then, you know, knowing that, that the allowable rates aren't, aren't going to ever hit that number, or most of them aren't going to hit that number. It's whatever their calculation is to capture the most revenue.
Right. And however we convey it to ComStar, via written letter or whatever, shame on us for not having that happen.
I promise I'll follow through with whatever you guys...
Right.
I submit to sign below on that form and forward it to ComStar.
Mitzi, do you have any questions?
Nope, I'm good.
All right, so...
I guess though, not necessarily related to this, but you remember when we met with ComStar back, whatever that was, year and a half ago?
Yes.
And we talked about kind of the, the reporting and the write-offs and all of that too. That's in process now on...
Yeah. The number you see in that spreadsheet, that 600,000 and change, that represents all the bills that come in in the last six months that are still being processed. At the end of six months, they kick a report to me and that they request that I decide whether or not it gets written off or sent to collections or both. So that, that 600,000 is basically accounts or charges that are still being processed.
Right. So it's really the net PMT applied, that 365, 444 number year-to-date that we pay attention to?
Yeah.
Which has a run rate of about 626,000.
Yeah, which is pretty close to what we have in cash receipts as of right now.
For a charge to end up in front of me to be considered, it has to have three bills applied to them and one collection notice, and each one has a, has also a hardship message attached to that.
Right. Okay. Anybody want to make a motion?
Make a, make a motion that we, that we change our rates to ComStar using their average bundle, ComStar top 50 rates as, as given to us.
Could you make it effective February 1st?
Effective, effective, what do we say, March 1st?
February 1st.
February 1st, okay.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Motion carries, is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Keith.
Thank you.
Take care. Welcome, guys. We're posted for 7, so we've got to wait until 7 before we get started, so we're just going to plow through a little more business here.
And could I just go back to the police station, the building committee?
Yes.
Just to let the selectmen see the new sign for the police station?
Yep.
Is that what it looks like?
Don't show that to the camera because if they, they think that they're getting out at August 16th, it's going to cause a problem.
This is the first day back for students.
I mean, if they, yeah, that's my point.
Where's that actually going, in the front lawn? Yes. Area? Yeah. And I did include in your packet the badge that's going to be on the building itself.
All right, so we have a few minutes here, three minutes. Anything, Mitzi, anything you're going to update us? Can you do it in three minutes?
Sure, because that way we don't really need to talk about this much beyond what we already did in the budget summary.
Okay.
So we plugged in the numbers, we got the school budget numbers, they were presented
We got the school budget numbers, they were presented last Wednesday. They showed an increase of about $750,000, $760,000 was the budget assessment this year. Oak Colony also had about $130,000 increase. So we're looking at about $900,000 of increased educational costs right now before we've done anything to address where the budget is. So currently, we are sitting at a deficit of $600,000 on the budget this year. We'll meet with all the department heads. Certainly, we have a regional school finance committee meeting coming up the end of February, so we can start talking to them about the biggest line item increase in this budget. There's nothing kind of unusual yet with this. This includes all department head wish list items that happen to be in this budget right now. So that is going to be a fun budget season, so that's my update.
Okay.
So you haven't had a regional school finance committee. You thought you had one, and there wasn't one.
Yeah, no, it's not until the 28th, I think, of February?
Right, right, right.
I did get the budget book, I don't know if you guys got that budget book, too.
From the school?
For Georgia.
One is for Georgia, one is for you. You can look at mine.
I didn't grab one, because I thought I read that they were for the regional FinCon people.
I just wanted to put a few comments in before your regional finance committee, that's all.
Do you wanna address that at the next?
How about we address it at the end of a meeting, which probably takes 10 more minutes?
Yeah, we can do that.
If we do that.
I don't have a problem with that.
Right, right, we're not gonna go long-winded on it.
Yeah, I haven't looked much at it yet, but I know there's definitely some stuff in there, so I'm happy to take your comments.
Right, right. I mean, it's always, we'll get into the next agenda item in a minute, but it's always, you know, it's so different with them than us. It's always the raises, the steps levels, and as we do the budget, we're in the hole $600,000, and we haven't even addressed capital, which typically runs $800,000. The last four years, it's run $800,000.
Yeah, but we've been taking, so the only thing I would say is, it's just the 183 in free cash that otherwise we've used for capital items, because we've historically now been transferring into the Capital Projects Debt Service Stabilization Fund in the fall, so that we'll take out of that to fund the majority of the capital items. Or if anything needs a ban, the ban won't hit until the second year.
But we've always had significant free cash as we increase the revenues to balance the budget. You might not have that free cash, but we can, we'll talk about that a little bit at the end of the meeting.
Okay.
All right, it's seven o'clock. Onto agenda item number two, which is to meet with Northeast Alternatives, Inc., to discuss their proposal for a medical and recreational marijuana cultivation facility at the Ten Kenneth Welch Drive. Welcome back, guys.
Yeah, thank you for having us back so quickly.
Appreciate your patience with this.
I appreciate it.
So we have the same information that we got the first time. Do you have any questions of these folks?
No, no, I thought the business plan, everything was well done. We've obviously done it before, so I thought it was well done. And you've looked at other host community agreements?
Yeah, in the ability, we understand it, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing that I would have a question for, or just something to consider, would just be with regard to the parking spaces for your employees, because I know you have about 100 that are in there. And I think just to make sure that that's something that you're gonna have to deal with, with the planning board, really at the special permit level, as opposed to us from the financial side, so.
Right, yeah, and I've spoke to Tom at length about that. Any excess that we need, he's got other buildings, as you're probably aware, where overflow will go and we'll shuttle. Because there's a, you know, fairly good chance as we, you know, because we're, what's in that business plan is only 40,000 square feet of it. As we roll into the second 40-something thousand, there'll be more employees, so we'll most likely have to use that, you know, additional parking.
And do you have any idea when that timeline would be, when you, I mean?
So I mean, our build-out will be, you know, six, eight months, you know, to get everything up and rolling, probably, you know, probably in the next fiscal year is when we would start the second phase.
Okay.
Anything else?
No, I mean, all traffic issues are gonna be, traffic, smell mitigation, all of that's gonna be borne by the special permit and the planning board.
I had gone to the planning board meetings, and certainly, parking is always an issue. I gave them a simplistic approach, but no one ever likes a simplistic approach, of saying there's no on-street parking. Then we know that they have to figure it out. And whether they do it, Tom Parento, in this case, has lots of building and lots of parking spaces, but...
Yeah, there's two ways. I mean, I think you guys in Fall River have a great system with the text messaging, and you can schedule an appointment.
Works really well, yeah.
And it's a great way to...
How does that work for parkinson and medical people?
So we have a dedicated medical...
Medical drives up, and they're, well, actually, you're just doing a grow facility here, so you just have to sort that out.
Here it's very different, so when you're thinking about retail, it's a very different...
Medical always gets first dibs. They get the parking spaces, they don't have to make appointments, I don't think.
That's right.
And that's the way you gotta keep that, because there's a lot of them not able to do that.
Right, yeah, make it as convenient as possible for them.
Mr. Chair, could I just ask your name, please?
Chris Harpens, my apologies.
All right, any other questions?
No. I apologize for the delay, but you know, with the state also, I wanted to make sure that that was all set.
She knew you back in high school. You threw away your book, burned it.
All right, does anybody want to make a motion?
I make a motion that we enter into a host community agreement with Northeast Alternatives, Inc.
All right, I'll second that. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
So we have your contact, yes, so we'll...
All three of us, or?
Yeah, our attorney.
Yeah, we'll reach out to the solicitor's office, I guess, and you wanna handle it that way?
Well, I guess part of your vote, too, is send it to Amy Krasnicki.
You're saying it's a clone, you're changing names.
Our attorney will get in touch with our attorney.
Okay, we'll reach out.
I do need your attorney's information, so somebody can load it to me.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, guys. All right, so let's do the update for number six, old business. So this is the...
Just the last piece.
The dam management meeting. I'm glad that we finally put management in between the words "dam" meeting.
Mitzi did.
It's a nice touch to avoid going "dam" meeting.
It was Lorraine who did it.
Lorraine started doing it, and now Mitzi even did it.
Yeah, I kinda prefer the dam meeting.
Right, the juvenile.
Exactly. If I can take advantage of a juvenile comment related to a meeting that I must attend over and over again, I'm happy to say I went to the dam meeting.
All right, so the dam meeting went well. It was on February 5, and you've done a lot of stuff, so why don't you give us an update?
Yeah, so surprisingly enough, it was only six days ago, was that dam meeting. So we talked about a number of different things. It was a good meeting, it lasted a little over an hour. What we really ended up, I presented to the group at that time, that I was going to write a grant for the Community Compact under efficiency and regionalization, so that we could jump-start accessing the funds that are available through House Bill 4375, which has authorized in the 2014, I guess through the House bill, it was $4,750,000. That's to be used for mitigation and study of the SWAMs at Pond Complex and its outlets. So I wrote a grant to request some funds for an engineer, so that we can set up a preliminary hydrology study, so that we can start to access those funds. What happened at the meeting was, we had a lot of questions. I kept coming back to the same question, which was, well, if the money is there at the State House, how do we get the money? And nobody seemed to necessarily have an answer to that, other than the thought that someone needed a governmental agency kind of in the middle to be able to access the money, but no one really knew one way or another. So I called Senator Rodrick's on my way up to Boston, right after I left that meeting, and he explained a lot about how to access the funds. I explained to him that I was planning on writing this grant, so that we could access the funds through an engineer. And that really resulted in the nine-page grant that I wrote and I submitted yesterday to the state for $150,000, because some community needs to be the intermediary between the state and the disbursement of the funds. And we haven't had a way to do that since, because no community really wants to be the one on the hook to foot the bill, because somebody needs to do it, and the state doesn't have an agency that's necessarily designated to be that go-between. So in order to do the administration of the money that happens to be at the state level, or to access the money that's been authorized through the state level, somebody needs to take action. And nobody had taken any action. And that's why that money had just sat there for a number of years. Again, it's authorized, it doesn't mean it's necessarily sitting there, we have to request it through the state. And so what I think the best approach was, is let's get the state involved from the Community Compact side, let's see if we can do this from a regionalization point. We can be the conduit to really start the study by not expending any funds to the taxpayer of Lakeville, and really trying to get the state to kind of foot the bill to jump-start the whole thing, so. That resulted in what you have in front of you, which is the grant application that I submitted, so I don't have a clue when we might hear back from the state, but I'm hopeful, because I did include a timeline.
2024.
I hope it's not 2024, I'm hoping it's much sooner than the Route 79 project. But it is for $150,000, it's been requested, so we'll see what we get.
Great.
I want to certainly commend you. You're the first one that has taken any action regarding most of our grants, aside from one we usually get at the dump and one we usually get at the police dispatch. You are the single largest grant writer in town, and I commend you for that. So I think it's a great, great step forward, there's no question about that.
Right. No, I think that the scene...
I'm willing to buy you a pizza and vote that you become chairman of the Board of Selectmen, which I thought you already did that. I'm sorry, go ahead, Aaron.
She's supposed to buy you the pizza.
Pepperoni pizza, pepperoni pizza made.
It's like when you play Monopoly and it has, like, you've been elected chairman of the board, pay each player $50.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry, you buy the pizza, though. I'm sorry.
Great, what a great...
But I think, all joking aside, I think it's a great job that you took the interest to do that, and I commend you for that.
Really, no, I was just gonna say basically the same thing, that you saw the opportunity, you connected the dots, and then you actually put the time into it, to write a grant, it's great. And I think, knowing that getting the resources to have that study done is the first step to access more money, hopefully it is a step in the right direction to have a long-term strategy to alleviate the problem with the Pond Complex. So thank you for doing that, it's awesome.
Yeah, I mean, Senator Rodrick's was extremely helpful, you know, as he had said, too, just related to some of the initiatives that are coming out at the state level this year, related to capital spending, are mitigation measures related to anything that could be caused by global warming? Not saying that that necessarily is the case, but certainly we know that the hydrology and kind of the current and everything that's been happening with the invasive weeds, you know, there's something going on, whether it's man-made, whether it's economic development, we don't know, and that's why we need the study to help us determine that. But, you know, that was one of the key areas that he said, if you have any idea that it might be related to global warming, put that in the grant. I said, I will do that.
But how do you know it isn't? You know what I mean?
I have no idea.
But that's the thing, there's two elements to this issue of the Pond Complex. One is the emergency response, and the other is a long-term strategy. And I think you've been active in the emergency response piece of it, too, which I appreciate, and I think we have an understanding and handle on that, but this is the bigger nut to crack, and to have a step in that direction is great, because it'd be nice to say, or it'd be nice to demonstrate to the people of Lakeville, and to a lesser extent, Free Town, that their houses aren't gonna get flooded, right? I mean, that would be great, so, you know, it's good stuff, so.
Yeah, I mean, there's only so much that we can control, even with a hydrology model, but at least it would be something, you know?
Yeah, absolutely. All right, so that is that for the old business update. Do we have anything else we want to talk about?
I do think, just related to the emergency management response, again, the water levels are so high right now, that I know we had the first meeting. I don't know if the group, our local group, has been meeting, again, to address some of those concerns, but one of the biggest issues that I think came out of some of the conversations that I had was making sure that we had enough volunteers, and I don't say manpower, because that's man and woman power, but enough people power to really help and to step in. And we don't really have a listing, I think, of volunteers who would be willing and able to step into certain roles. They talked about the shelter training and things like that, so I want to make sure that we know and we start getting that plan in place, because...
Well, James Mannion, the MIMA, our MIMA representative, just sent out an email late today, that they're holding a meeting at the Middleborough Town Hall for the SIR volunteers. I know we have a list of people in Lakeville that have signed up, they're on the SIR, so I haven't had a chance to talk to Mike about it, if he's attending that.
Yeah, and if we could just, like, advertise that...
I think talking to Michael, and I think talking to Danny, and then, because they're the emergency response people, you know, having the sub-meetings is okay, but really about going to school, who contacts, the electric company to shut electricity off, those, the danger aspects, those are all on us. They're not on any other town. So let's encourage Michael and Danny to have more meetings to firm up those questions about who's doing what, and where is the list of volunteers, that type of thing. And the top-level expertise of how to get people out of their houses, we've talked about the schools, we found the cots, we found the sandbags. So some things have happened, but we really should go through the flow.
And we did talk about that at the Middleborough meeting, you went to Mitzi, with Jackie Crowley was there, and just what happened last time, as far as who's shutting the electricity off to hours that they evacuated.
But we should, when I say our committee, our Lakeville committee should really go through that, and make sure all the numbers and people are posted properly.
Yeah, and I'd like to be involved in that, too, at least as far as, you know, if we call a selectmen's meeting at the same time, I don't care, but, you know, whatever the case is, just so that we're all on the same page. I know we all had to get NIM certified and all of that, too, but just, you know, in relation to, we're all hearing it from the residents, so I just want to make sure that we're all aware of what's going on.
The levels, although certainly in your pictures, they're high, all of them really went down a couple of inches, which is kind of okay, getting more rain, but I don't know that it's substantial rain. We're lucky we don't have any snow on the ground, so we have a lot of things going in our favor.
Yeah, we might get lucky.
But let's have that meeting.
Yep.
Okay. Any other business, so?
I just wanted, because we're gonna go into executive session, right?
Yes.
The next thing. I just wanted to flip through the school budget just a second.
Oh, yeah.
Not a lot.
Yep.
Once again, no one ever loves to number pages, so I guess I'd bear with you, if you start at the beginning and kind of flip through to the employee salaries, which is about six pages in. So you see the 9/11, and certainly, it isn't the percent, the percent is 4.117%, because the collective bargaining, people always address that, and we do, too, you know, 2% collective bargaining, but really, it's the SEPS and levels that really drives the increase. And so it's just a discussion, because when we first started years ago, Mitzi, we had lots of notes, it was $550,000 was the steps levels and the cost of living increase, now it's 9/11 headed to a million. I don't know what can be done. You're not gonna do anything, this is a contractual thing that's already done.
It does include three and a half people, new.
It's not.
It's photocopied?
Yeah, it's on.
It has hair on it, yeah.
Well, then flip to the next page, Mitzi, on the staffing, which addresses the, which addresses the three and a half people. So are they losing six and a half people? So if that's the case, Mitzi, it should have gone down.
Right.
So you went from six and a half to three and a half, so when you, you're just not adding three and a half people to it.
Right, so your change is really 1.1, a little over a million, it's almost a million dollars, it's higher than the 9/11, is what you're saying, yeah. And then health insurance, too, is the same thing, did they remove the equivalent of three plans, you know, on top of that change? One of the other things I have, too, is I want to check and double-check that transportation thing, I was just saying, because of that...
Let's flip the, yeah, let's flip the pages. So the next one on transportation, it's really the reimbursement part of it, that the state last year gave us a significant amount more, and I'm not so sure that the transportation reimbursement numbers are correct.
Well, right, they're not.
They're addressing the gross.
Yeah, so they're not, because what happened was, in the budget assessment from last year, if we were comparing assessment to assessment, not final numbers of what the excess transportation was that went into E and D. So the increase was about $300,000.
Right, exactly.
So if the transportation really went up $106,000, the reimbursement went up 300. So it should be a negative 200 on there, is what I would say.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, so there's that piece, and then we had the special education line item of the 125.
Yep, yep.
So that whole thing, too, you know, and those are definite items where I'm looking at it saying, I know you say this in here, but that's not apples to apples.
Right, I know you're on top of those, so if you do the gross transportation, you need to give us the idea on the reimbursement, which...
Right, because all it says is, this is the increase, although, that's what I don't understand, is if they lumped in special education in this 268, so if it's really 106, then is that net of the reimbursements? Because I don't see that.
I don't know.
But, yeah, and that's why I have more, I have that book that I haven't had a chance to dig into.
Right, I have my book at work. The capital debt payments on the next page, Mitzi, I know you still owe me the Grace thing, if you can find that. If you looked and you can't find it, let me know.
No, I have it, I just never sent it to you.
Just send it to me.
You didn't buy me a pizza, so I didn't send it to you.
Special education on the next page, Mitzi. We talk about, and I know you know this, obviously, to review the reimbursement part.
The circuit breaker piece?
Right, and how the $10,003,04 was arrived at. Before this budget that's in front of us today, two school committee meetings ago, the E and D was on schedule to be $750,000 at the end of the year. Now it's down to a couple hundred thousand, I think.
No, are you, I think you might be mistaken, possibly.
Well, we'll flip through that.
Okay. Because if that is the case, then I definitely have to go back and watch that entire meeting because it should still be at 750.
Right. The special education that they did on the next page, I tried to estimate, the graphs are difficult to go through the numbers, but it looks like the special education number probably went up about 10 students. That's about all. The English language education, that actually shows a decrease almost at all the schools. The excess and deficiency, which is the next page, they're talking about the fiscal year 19 being $218,144. Keep going.
Sorry, which one? I was looking for that thing. You asked me to do seven things at the same time.
No, don't look yet.
Keep going.
Don't look. But wait, there's more.
Keep going.
Which one?
This one.
E and D?
Yeah, E and D.
No, this is fine, because that's actually what's certified. But what we're expecting to fall into it for fiscal year 20 is the additional $500,000 in there. So we, like, I get, at the Regional FinCom, we have the 218, which is certified, and then we have the additional cash that actually came in after the budget was set, so that's what brings, and it's going to flow through to E and D this year. So it should be at about 750 at the end of this year, certified.
I hope that that's the case.
Exactly.
District enrollment, looking at the numbers between 2016 and 18, it went up by 54 students, of which 26 of those were school choice additions. So it really only went up 28 over three years, which isn't a bad deal.
Well, and, I mean, you've got to account for the fact, too, that that includes the bump in the kindergarten in that time period, too.
Oh, yeah. Oh, there's no question. That's a gigantic, that's a gigantic bump. Otherwise, it's only the class size in the middle school, which I think is too high, and the class size at the high school is too low. But I've said that before. You know, if we want to put our bang for the buck, you'd think you'd want to switch that a little bit. Otherwise, that's it.
Okay.
And I know you've addressed all of those.
Yeah, no, I mean, I haven't addressed it.
Haven't will.
But, yeah, those are definitely, I mean, if you're interested at all and you want to post for the Regional FinCom...
Yeah, why don't you just post it?
That way you can come and speak in that way.
So I'll just listen rather than wait a couple of days.
Yeah, because I don't want to miss anything if there's something that, you know, you want to say that I haven't had a chance to.
No, no, it's really more beyond your control because 85% of it is a given, and until you change the whole philosophy, it doesn't work.
Well, the question is really what's behind the numbers that are in there, because granted, the 9/11 increase is one thing, but, that being said, you know, when you look at some